I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, April 27, 2021. It is now 6:33. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we do the approval of a journal, I want everyone to know that we will be utilizing F for a roll call this evening, starting with Webb, Harder, Dunaway, Clancy, Days, Fitch, and Tracus. That will be the order of the roll calls. Is there a motion for the approval of the Journal of April 13, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The April 13 Journal is approved. The April 20th Journal has not been finalized yet, so we will do that on next week. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Moving on to communications, Madam Chair, under zoning matters, item number one, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Moving on to other communications, Madam Chair, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number five.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the preparation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number seven, Second District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Fourth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number nine, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 10, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
That will be the order.
All right, moving on to item number 11, First District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 13, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business and refer to the Ethics Committee.
So ordered.
Item number 14.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to number 15, and that will be the order.
Item number 16, First District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 17, First and Fourth Districts.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number 18, and that will be the order.
Moving on to add-ons this evening, Madam Chair, item number one, Second District.
Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole.
So ordered.
Item number two, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Moving on to, we don't have any special committees reports this evening, we will move to public forum. How many speakers do we have this evening, Chris? I'm sorry, Kevin?
That's okay, Madam Chair, I'll have to defer to Chris, as I do not have the public speaker list, so if, Chris, you'll run them through, please.
Of course, Madam Chair, we have 17 speakers that have registered.
Okay.
The first speaker will be Jones, I'm sorry.
One second, so when your name is called, give us your first name, last name, and your zip code, so the record, and the clerk will time you at three minutes, when your three minutes are about up, we'll give you a warning. I will also say that this is an opportunity for you to speak to the council members, your time, we don't allow the debate back and forth, if you do have concerns, many of our assistants are on the call, and if this pertains to your district, you can contact them directly, or they can reach out to you and contact you directly, either way that works, so we want everyone to have an opportunity to voice their opinion and say what they have to say, the concerns to this council. So with that, we will start with the first speaker.
Madam Chair, Kevin, are you running the timer, or is the Webex timer working?
I believe it should be working now, so I can hit the timer when you call the speaker.
Okay, our first speaker tonight will be Joan Smith-Lauer, followed by Dan Manning.
I'm Joan Smith-Lauer, I live and have lived in 63123 for 25 years. I want to begin by thanking the Improvement Committee for sending the plant for the Quilube and the car wash place back to the Planning Committee, and then I asked the whole council and the Planning Committee to please remember, this is where we live, this is where we have our families, where we go out to eat on a casual evening, we have lost restaurant at 21 in Lindbergh, we want another restaurant, but back there, we can't all afford to live on a golf course like some people do, we live here, we want a family activity, we want socialization, the Taco Bell, I understand from sources in my community that evidently they're asking about 20 times more than what that property is worth, or at least that's what he is asking for other things to be done there, 20% more than the going rate, I cannot confirm that, all I know is it has been a long time since the Taco Bell was here, and I heard the gentleman speak last week, but I once again, I remind him, we live in this community, we cannot afford to live on a golf course, we live here, we have our friends and family here. I want to ask the council in the new planning of this property to remember that we are a neighborhood, Concord Village is one of the oldest, and again, now it's unincorporated villages in the St. Louis County area, to my knowledge, anyway, I grew up in Kirkwood, and I'd like to see this area stay family-friendly, and I know the people over on Graboy would be delighted to have a restaurant go in there instead of a car wash, we have car washes and oil change places all over South County, even I could throw a stone and hit one of them. So I appreciate the Improvement Council's actions, and I beseech the Planning Committee to remember, this is our neighborhood, it's not just a place to stick up any old thing that comes along the road that somebody will pay this man for, it's where we live. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Manning, followed by Stacy Cammerer.
Good evening, my name is Dan Manning, 63017, I'm an attorney for Dassar Olom and Boyle LLC, and we represent STO Quilube 1, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the petitioner of PC 2220, a petition for a conditional use permit for a vehicle service facility at 554 South Lindbergh Boulevard. I submitted written remarks in advance of last week's meeting and this week's meeting, and I also spoke at last week's meeting, so I'll refer counsel to those comments. I'll also comment this evening, council's discretion to approve or deny conditional use permits is limited to consideration of standards that are set forth in the St. Louis County zoning ordinance, my client's petition meets all of those standards, compliance with those standards are described in detail in the staff report and the Planning Commission reports respecting this petition, since the petition meets those standards, Missouri law compels approval of this petition. Factors such as the number of similar businesses near the property or the state where the petitioner is from are not articulated as factors in the zoning ordinance, and applicable law prohibits taking these factors into account when making planning and zoning decisions. The inquiry is whether the petition meets the requirements for a conditional use permit stated in the zoning ordinance, and since a petition filed by STO Quilube meets those requirements, STO Quilube respectfully requests the county council uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the petition subject to the requirements established by the Planning Commission. Additionally, just before the meeting, the representative for Mr. Walls, the property owner, reached out to me to let me know the property owner was pulled out of town by his employer and could not make the meeting this evening, so he asked me to read some remarks on his behalf, those remarks are as follows. "Good evening, my name is Brian Walls, I'm the trustee of the William F. Walls Trust, that is the owner of the property at 554 South Lindbergh, I was at the Public Improvements Committee meeting a few weeks ago, when someone referenced that this location is the jewel of Concord Village, which is something I know my father would have certainly agreed with, my family has owned this property since the 1950s, and every member of my family has had blood and sweat in developing this location, our first fast food lease at this location was with Zantigo in the early 1980s, and that lease really helped dig my family out of a hole, and ultimately helped fund our higher education, when Zantigo was acquired by Taco Bell, we were happy to have a stable tenant at this location for many years, unfortunately, the franchisee and my father couldn't come to an agreement on a new lease, and the property became vacant around five or six years ago. After my father passed in early 2018, I hired Pace Properties to market the property, and I thought it was going to be easy to lease the property to another fast food restaurant, but I was flat wrong, it seems that curb cut issues with ingress and egress for high-volume sites that rely on drive-throughs such as fast food made the property difficult to market to fast food users, Pace marketed the property to over 100 fast food establishments, and has not received a single offer in three years, not one, even after dropping our asking price, the one offer we did receive was for a medical marijuana establishment, which was actually over our asking price, but we did not think that was appropriate at this use, we finally received a reputable offer from Take Five location, and therefore we hope the county council approve that petition this evening, thank you."
The next speaker will be Stacy Cammerer, and will be followed by Sue Erby.
My name is Stacy Cammerer, 63043, and I am calling in to support the Ethics Committee investigation into Sam Page's second job, I mean, what is there to be afraid of, that the community might actually get the full information of what's going on? Just in case there was a question about validity of that petition and the signatures on that petition, I can, I can state that I am on that list, and guarantee you that there were plenty more people willing to sign from several different zip codes throughout the whole entire St. Louis County area, specifically especially North County. I find it very telling that there's been no questions asked at any of the press conferences, literally, Dr. Page, you say, are there any questions, and you know there are no questions, so why do you even ask that, because it's all staged, until, until yesterday, when you knew that this was coming as far as the investigation, and you had to try and bring that up about Councilman Harder and what he was doing. I mean, do you really think that the public is that stupid, that we don't understand what's going on? I mean, we are sick of the arrogance, and you acting like you don't have to answer the questions to your own constituents, I mean, the time will come, and hopefully sooner rather than later, when it all comes out, it really can't come soon enough, you are not above the rules, and the smoke and mirrors game can only last so long. And the other thing that I want to add is that you cannot pick and choose which CDC guidelines fit your agenda, because clearly you have an agenda to keep control over St. Louis County, and be more restrictive than what the CDC recommends, you need to get the masks off the people while they're outside, just like the CDC says, not in two days, not in two weeks, now, thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Sue Erby, who will be followed by David Gocken.
Good evening, Sue Erby, 63052, yes, 63052 is not in St. Louis County, but as an animal advocate and lover, I try to stay up on animal welfare, no matter where it takes place. Why would St. Louis County Animal Care and Control want to go back to the reputation they had in 2019? February 2019, they euthanized an innocent dog named Faust, who in spite of the fact was in the care of stray rescue, ended up losing her life at St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. April 2019, federal lawsuit filed against St. Louis County as animal control volunteers allege retaliation, the lawsuit was filed after St. Louis County Animal Care and Control had all volunteers reapply and re-interview for their jobs. July 2019, euthanized a sweet dog named Thor, who was brought in as a stray and labeled by the finder as a friendly, easygoing pup, but St. Louis County labeled him aggressive and euthanized him. Also, in July 2019, audit finds St. Louis County Animal Care and Control mishandling animals, also, St. Louis County Animal Care and Control at that time had dog owners who surrendered their dogs, check a box on a form that says O R E, and were given no explanation. O R E means owner requested euthanasia, and an owner checking that box allowed the shelter to not count that in its euthanasia statistics, well, here we go again, a well-known animal advocate and well-qualified person was hired in December 2019 as St. Louis County Animal Care and Control's Animal Population Manager, and achieved great things, dropped euthanasia rates down to just about zero, pet adoption skyrocketed, improved morale amongst the staff and volunteers, yet, St. Louis County Animal Care and Control let this person go in December 2020. March 2021, St. Louis County Animal Care and Control euthanized a pup named Dairy, volunteers were working with Dairy, and notes on his updated kennel card dated 3/4/2021 wrote of Dairy's vast improvement in behavior, videos of Dairy documented his sweet nature, six days later, those in power, in spite of Dairy's vast improvement, had Dairy euthanized. The method of euthanasia St. Louis County Care and Control currently allegedly uses is questionable, the heart stick method, I looked up the definition of this method, here's what I found, heart stick euthanasia is done by county shelters to save money, it is cheaper for a shelter to not humanely sedate the dog, but euthanize the dog in one step, with a long steel needle jab straight to the live and panic kicking dog's heart as the dog tries to escape the attendant's foot or grasp, I can only ask why, please, this has to stop, please prove me wrong and show the public these things aren't true, and if they are, please have compassion and do the right thing, remember, as we all go to bed tonight in our nice spacious homes, animals at St. Louis County Animal Care and Control sit in lonely, dirty cages, wishing for a forever home, as a community, we can work together and make that dream come true for those animals, thank you for your time.
Thank you, our next speaker is David Gocken, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Good evening, County Executive Page and Chairperson Days and all council members, last week, my fellow St. Louis County retiree Joyce Gulov submitted a couple of charts related to a cost of living for St. Louis County retirees, she had planned to speak, but some technical glitch prevented her from doing so, tonight, I am speaking in her stead about these charts because she is unavailable, I am in hopes that you have these documents in view, or if not, you have some memory of them from last week. St. Louis County retirees have not had a cost of living adjustment or COLA since 2005, Joyce and I have researched this issue, and with 11 other public pensions in the state of Missouri, every pension except St. Louis County has had anywhere from seven at the low end to 14 on the high end COLAs over the 2006-2019 timeframe, this is shown in one of the documents, the other documents showed the effects of COLAs over time, we use the state of Missouri, the city of St. Louis, and St. Louis County, starting with the $20,000 pension, a person in the state's pension plan would now be drawing over $25,000, a person in the city's pension plan would be drawing over $26,000, and a person in the St. Louis County pension plan would be drawing the same, $20,000. We are asking the council if they consider this fair or just in the largest and wealthiest county in the state of Missouri, another issue Joyce planned to address was the makeup of the St. Louis County Retirement Board, we have a vacancy for a board member who is to be a St. Louis County employee, this vacancy has been unfilled for over a year, the other issue is the current board chair's term expired in 2014, yes, you heard correctly, it expired in 2014. A few months before COVID-19 hit, I had requested through one of Mr. Page's staff to ask the county council chair, Mr. Tracus at the time, to nominate a replacement, and the staff person said Mr. Tracus's response was he could not think of anyone to nominate, this response is not acceptable, I am in hopes Chairperson Days, you can do better, thanks, thank you for your time.
Thank you, our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Elad Gross.
Hi, good evening, I would love to start with what I call in about every week with the, everything that's going on with the pandemic, but I would just absolutely be remiss if I didn't start with the situation at Animal Control, and, and I will admit, I am an animal lover through and through, I've taught my children to always love all of God's little creatures, and I cannot comfortably ignore what is going on there, the numbers are rising, the staff is dwindling, there is a problem, I am thrilled that we're having a May 7 meeting, and I received that response via email, I'm excited about that, but there are some things that absolutely cannot wait, there are dogs, well, animals that are being left in cages 24 hours a day, they do not get out. And for anyone to knowingly choose heart stick euthanasia, or for anyone to know that that is happening, and to do nothing, I just, I have no words, please, help us, please, Google what heart stick euthanasia is, and do something, it's that important, please. Okay, next thing, Dr. Page, your briefings, we can't email you, we can't call you, we can't submit questions to you via Facebook or your Twitter, how can we ask you questions? Doug seems to be the only one able to do that, and he won't share our questions with you either, we have to be able to ask you questions. Today, I was on a conference call, one of many, and one of my coworkers said to me that they were really happy to hear about Kansas City that was going to be lifting a lot of the restrictions soon, and I had to explain to them, oh no, Kansas City is in the state of Missouri, but it's very different than St. Louis County, even though Missouri doesn't have a mask mandate, St. Louis County does, so we are going to be getting the mandates lifted like Kansas City, and they were just shocked, they didn't understand it, and I don't either, it's just time, and then I'll finish up with, I hope we're still looking at in-person meetings, because we'd really like to get there in person, for you to see us and for us to be able to see you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, our next speaker is Elad Gross, followed by Matthew Chase.
Hi, all, council members and county executive, thank you for holding this tonight, I am here to discuss specifically Board Bill 111, my name is Elad Gross, I am 63111, zip code, I also work for the St. Louis Mediation Project, which for over a decade now has been working with St. Louis County and St. Louis City to provide free mediations for landlords and tenants, so I've been working with quite a few landlords and tenants, and I know I've spoken to some of you about this issue already, I did want to provide a little bit of an update on some of the data, because I know that that is an issue that a lot of you are interested in, over just the last few days, we've received many calls to just our number, those calls were from both landlords and tenants, in just the last couple of days, and we're only seeing a portion of all the folks who are being affected by evictions and the potential eviction crisis in St. Louis County, of those, we've had 14 adults, four of those who were single mothers, and in those households, about 15 children, all of whom were at one point facing eviction, all of whom were not informed about the, any of the moratoriums on evictions, and all of whom did not know about the rental assistance programs, thankfully, all of those folks now are applying, and they are working with their landlords to do so, I've also talked with many landlords who were not informed about the rental assistance programs that were out there, and unfortunately, in St. Louis County, unlike many other jurisdictions, but in St. Louis County, the eviction moratorium, the local one, from the county courts, was lifted on the exact same day when funding became available, and without some kind of at least a pause on that, which Board Bill 111, excuse me, Bill Number 111 would provide, there are potentials for mass evictions throughout the county, I spoke to just a tenant today who called, and said that he had applied, and his relationship with his landlord, as you can expect, has improved significantly, but these were folks who were pushing very hard for eviction before, simply because they didn't know the process, and unfortunately, because previous funding programs were not as flexible as this one, this board bill is flexible, it protects families, it provides flexibilities for landlords to evict folks who aren't doing the right thing, including folks who aren't applying for funding, or folks who are committing criminal activity, whatever it might be, it does provide that flexibility for landlords as well, and it protects our region from potential economic disaster if these mass evictions are to occur, so I am here to testify in support of that bill, and you all have my contacts, so happy to talk to you at any time, thank you for your time.
Thank you, our next speaker is Matthew Chase, followed by Elena Johns-Wolff.
Hello, thank you very much, and I'd like to echo two speakers prior, very briefly, I don't believe we're properly being allowed to exercise our constitutional right to petition our government if we are not seen and can't see you in person, the, they have to allow in person, all of you, you can require that people stand at six feet and wear masks, but most, all of you are vaccinated, I'm vaccinated, there's no reason I and the other lady and everybody else can't come to see you in person, it's time, moving along, Elad Gross is someone I've dealt with, he, he very much helps out tenants on cases that I file, I'm a landlord attorney, I spoke with you last week, respectfully, I have to dis- Respectfully, I have to disagree with Elad that, no, this Bill 111 does not provide any sort of protection for landlords. It says you could still evict for other reasons, but the plain fact is, if this bill has any legal meaning, which I believe it's totally contrary to Missouri statute and the Missouri Constitution, you, respectfully, you, the council, do not have the power to stop Missouri state law, to stop the state court, and to stop the state court's employee here in the county, which is the sheriff, from doing its job. You don't have that power. No offense, but you simply can't do what you're purporting to be able to do. However, I have to tell you, and Elad is probably still listening, and he could confirm, those people who are trying are not the ones we are pushing for. Now, out of the approximate 660 or so sheriff's executions that were in the queue, that it was talked about widely in the newspapers and by you folks, and everybody's worried about, about a third of those were mine cases. Now, out of those, a lot were satisfied, or people skipped, they've left. We stopped the sheriff execution. But of the ones that were left, the ones that are showing these CDC declarations the very last minute, overwhelming majority of them, folks, I'm sorry to say, are not people like Elad discussed. Those people who really didn't know are in no communication, though, with the landlords, and in the cases where attorneys are involved, which are almost all evictions in this state. The tenants are making no effort. We have countless, the ones we're pushing and pushing, and that are being canceled at the last minute, are the ones where the sheriffs are stopped at the last minute, and sorry, they've made no payment in a year, in 11 months, in 13 months, in 14 months, zero dollars. They are using the pandemic and the moratoriums to simply get free rent for as long as possible. Those folks who are trying are being helped. And frankly, the bill does not protect landlords, because it would require filing a new suit to do the eviction based on other reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Johns-Wolff, followed by Heather Brown.
Hello, my name's Elena Johns-Wolff, 63118. I'm an assistant professor of sociology at UMSO who studies housing. So today, I'm going to discuss the implications of eviction on our community if they are still going to take place. So of course, most evictions occur because renters can't pay rent. So just to give you an idea of what the Census Bureau's household poll survey indicates, as of March this year, about 1 in 7 Missouri renters said they had slight to no confidence that they would be able to pay next month's rent. And about 1 in 4 renters said they felt somewhat or very likely that they would have to be, have to leave their home in the next two months due to eviction. So of course, research has long documented that when landlords don't receive that full rent payment, they actually show considerable discretion in whether to file an eviction. So this means that especially in our current circumstances, we need to protect those most at risk of losing their home. In normal times, women are twice as likely to be evicted than men, and that likelihood of eviction increases with the number of children they have, regardless of class background, racial background, and rental payment history importantly. So together, this research demonstrates that although eviction can bring on several problems for households, they're also most likely to occur among our most marginalized and vulnerable. So the effects of an eviction on families reach far beyond that day that they're removed from the home. They're taking heavy tolls on families and communities. So one of the major consequences that is in their hurried search for new housing, they're often met with obstacles. So some research shows that when renters whose last move was involuntary through something like eviction, they're also 25% more likely to experience long-term housing problems compared to other low-income renters. It's also the largest contributor to homelessness and sustained housing instability. So, of course, these consequences help to explain why families who experience an eviction, again, during normal times, report higher levels of material hardship and depressive symptoms for years after the forced move. So not weeks, not months, but years. So beyond the search, this hurried search for housing, an eviction is also a major source of family instability, of job loss, of declined school performance for children, and decreased mental health for adults. So the problem of eviction is exacerbated in high renter-occupied areas like St. Louis, where in the county, about 1/3 of all residences are renter-occupied. And I just want to take you back to that statistic I shared. 1 in 4 Missouri renters are currently worried about where their rent will come in the coming months. So without a halt on evictions...
That's 30 minutes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Brown, followed by John B. Goss.
All right, thank you. My name is Heather Brown, 63011. In a court case brought by a coalition of Pennsylvania cities, counties, and businesses against the governor, federal Judge William Stickman decided in his decision's favor in September 2020. He wrote, "The Constitution cannot accept the concept of a new normal where the basic liberties of the people can be subordinated to open-ended emergency mitigation measures. Rather, the Constitution sets certain lines that may not be crossed even in an emergency. Actions taken by defendants cross those lines. It is the duty of the court to declare these actions unconstitutional. Similar cases have been decided in California, Michigan, and other states. As a resident of St. Louis County and a free citizen in the Constitutional Republic of the USA, I demand that all restrictions be rescinded immediately. Sam Page and the fresh hell of St. Louis County are the pure embodiment of open-ended emergency mitigation measures. It is unconstitutional for the executive branch to make law, and the Department of Health is appointed by Sam Page. Your continued excuse that you follow the guidance of the Department of Health may fool some people, but not all of us. Executive orders and mandates exist more than a year later when no emergency exists. No surprise, though, because county legal council is a useless biased page appointee. Further, I've heard that St. Louis County isn't planning on reopening until a large percentage of people get vaccinated. First off, people are dying from this vaccine. More than one breastfed infant has died from thrombocytopenia after nursing from a recently vaccinated mother. Dying babies from this vaccine. Minstral cycles of vaccinated women or those in close proximity to the recently vaccinated have been impacted so noticeably that more than 20,000 women have responded to wash-use study about it. There is no long-term safety data that exists for these vaccines, which like drugs, also have side effects, potentially deadly ones at that. Vaccines are just drugs in a needle. Where there is risk, it is imperative there's a choice, and making St. Louis County citizens' freedoms contingent on a medical procedure ripe with unknown risk is unethical and illegal, considering they are not even fully FDA-approved, only authorized for emergency use. And let's be honest, by Fauci's own admission and the drug companies themselves, the vaccines do not even stop transmission of the virus. End this charade immediately, end every mandate, including all mask, school, sports, business, and restaurant mandates and restrictions immediately. I'll be calling in next week to present facts about the utter uselessness and risks of masks, another medical use item for which there must be a choice because of the risk. Also, Councilman Harder, I am your constituent, I would like to add my name, Heather Brown, to your list of St. Louis County residents that would like the Ethics Board to investigate Sam Page. And for the last second that I have, I am utterly floored by the people that have been calling in about St. Louis County, the dogs and the cats and the animals in our shelter. We can better...
Let's change this, Madam Chair.
That's sick.
Our next speaker is John B. Goss, followed by Lynn LeBob.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Okay, because also I got some blast on my screen. I'm addressing the council with respect to an agenda item for a resolution to overturn Planning Commission's recommendation to approve a conditional use permit for the operation of a car wash at 10094 Grabloy Road. As I started to say, I'm an attorney with a law firm, Smith, Omenson, 120 South Central, Suite 700, Clayton, Missouri, 63105. A review by the planning staff, and not one, but two reviews by the Planning Commission, demonstrated and found that the conditional use permit standards of St. Louis County ordinances were met by this application. What is apparent from a review of the record is that notwithstanding this fact, there's a desire for different use, and that different use on the site would be a restaurant with a drive-through. However, this is not a zoning decision. It is not discretionary. It's not a question of what's the right use, it's a question of whether this use meets the conditional use permit standards. And in fact, it does. The Planning Commission found that it met all of those conditions. It noted that Grabloy is an auto-oriented corridor, and the proposed use is reasonable and consistent with the surrounding development pattern along Grabloy Road, which is an established commercial corridor. The commission made certain recommendations, which the applicant has agreed to follow, with respect to improving aesthetics, with respect to the site circulation, and as far as the fencing on the site. The Panera Bread proposal, which this county approved, and which seems to be the more desired use, would actually generate considerably more traffic than the current proposal. An examination of the Panera Bread proposal would indicate that it's going to generate at least double the amount of traffic as the proposed use. Further, the questions raised about the vacuum system, the noise ordinance, we'll address those, and the staff noted those can be further addressed at the site plan stage. This simply isn't a residential neighborhood. We're surrounded by a grocery store, a parking lot, another shopping center, and the water tanks of Missouri American, hardly uses that are going to be disturbed by this car wash. So the proposed use, the conditional use, meets the requirements with respect to St. Louis County ordinances, and as consequence, it is something that the council should approve, and I respectfully request that the resolution to overturn the Planning Commission not be approved. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn LeBob, followed by Charles LeDell.
Mr. Clerk, unfortunately, I was able to get Lynn in, but for some reason, she's dropped off now, so we'll have to jump down to Charles Little.
All right, and we'll reach out to Ms. LeBob. So our next speaker is Charles LeDell, followed by Tyler Hawkins.
Good evening, council members. Dr. Sam Page, first of all, I would like to congratulate you all on your fantastic job that you've done during these perilous times in this world, lack, and... I think you guys have been phenomenal. Dr. Page, I think that you have been wonderful with your daily briefings, keeping us informed, and I am very grateful. With all that said, I'm sorry, I forgot to say my zip code, 63132 in University City. My name is Charles LeDell, and my wife's name is Terry LeDell. We both have been affected adversely, of course, by the coronavirus, which started last year, and to no avail, or anything that we could do to prevent that. We both went through a hardship when the lockdown came. With all that said, because I know I have limited time here, we have been facing a lot of hardships here. We've lost a vehicle. We have unfortunately been evicted. And so my question to the council members and Dr. Page this evening is, is there anything for people who are in this situation, resource-wise, or, because there's going to be like a means of America... And, you know, there's going to be, you know, an issue here, and quite frankly, my wife and I are afraid. We are both employed. My wife is a teacher's aide in a St. Louis public school system, and I am a janitor, you know, an essential worker, working at a plant. And we both are gainfully employed, but the problem has been for us since we've been evicted. We can't find any place, basically, to live. So what we're asking is, is there any plans or anything in place to help people who have already been evicted, you know, to have something in place for them so that they don't end up homeless? Again, I'd like to thank you guys for all that you have done, and I hope that there, we can work together to find a solution to this issue. And again, thank you for listening. Good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tyler Hawkins, followed by Terry LeDell.
I made a mistake, I apologize. I'm a reporter with Fox, too. I'm just here listening and working on my story tonight, I don't have anything to say. I apologize for the mix-up.
All righty. Thank you. We will move on to Terry LeDell, followed by Donna Slimer.
Kevin, I know that Mr. LeDell, just before, he said his wife's name was Terry. I don't know if she's speaking in addition to him?
Yes.
Okay, all right then.
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, so yes, in addition to him. And I am 60 years old, and I have worked since I was 19. Not only do I work for St. Louis Public Schools, I also work at a daycare in a very at-risk area. And it's hard for me to get up each day after serving this country in the capacity of being an educator and a good citizen, as well as my husband, that I have to go in and face those babies every day, to places, with courage, and egg them on, that they can be anything they want to be, they can do anything they want to be, and I may not have a place to stay that night. That's extremely hard. I come from a family of educators, a family of hard workers, and every word we try, no, 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 no. Have called so many agencies, we have applied to so many agencies, and at the end of the day, no, you had an eviction, so therefore you are unworthy. Or if you pay so much money, we'll send you a list of private owners. And I think something should be put in place for people across this country. And I am literally shocked that there is nothing in place. I realize we have never been through a pandemic before, but these officials are put in place, they make much money, big salaries. They get to go home at night and not worry about being evicted. You have people that are losing homes. We just want an opportunity to rent again and to help so that we can get our landlord paid what she is due. My husband came home from lunch to find a sheriff at the door saying, "We have five days to get out." Are you kidding me? Didn't receive anything from the courts or anything for this particular case, and a moratorium doesn't end till June the 30th, but supposedly, we have until Monday to get out of here. And I am just appalled, and it's not just for me, it is for all of us. We don't want to be homeless, we're not shiftless, lazy people. My parents paid, my ancestors paid, and now we are paying. And I just want to be able to go to work and to teach our future. And have a good evening, and thank you so much for your time. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna... Our next speaker is Donna Slimer, followed by Jason Moore.
Good evening, council. Donna Slimer, 63114. I'm sure you're all aware that the current director at St. Louis County Animal Control, Dr. Vanessa Duris, in her one year at the shelter has wrongfully euthanized a dog owned by a loving family. A lawsuit has been filed against ACC and Dr. Duris for this action. And not only that, she returned a dog to an abusive owner before the investigation had been completed. Staff has complained that she received a donation of unknown amount for the shelter and that the donation went directly into her personal account. She has made racist remarks in the workplace and has inappropriately touched personnel. Recently, Derry, a staff favorite dog, was the latest innocent animal killed by incompetent and unqualified people at St. Louis County Animal Control. Derry did not like being around other dogs at the shelter, and he never showed aggression towards people. The person that made the decision to kill him never took Derry out of his kennel to evaluate him. Derry should have been properly evaluated and networked to local rescue organizations. It is time for the entire management staff to be replaced. A forward-thinking director could reduce the euthanasia and intake with the same budget. Mandy Ryan did it. It would not cost more taxpayer money to solve the problem. We do not need to privatize the shelter as that would cost more to the taxpayers. We need competent leadership at ACC. It was proven when Mandy was hired, the right leadership team would fix the problem. They wrongfully fired their only person that was evaluating and networking dogs to the rescues, and the one person that brought the high-kill shelter to a no-kill status in her first two weeks. Her replacement is not qualified to evaluate behavior in dogs, yet they are deciding who should live or die. The unqualified person that was put into that position evaluated Derry, yet never took him out of his kennel and didn't even try to network him to a rescue. He should be ashamed. Enough is enough. It's time to get rid of the people that don't know what they're doing and that rarely show up for work. Dr. Duris and her leadership team need to go. Their salaries are a waste of taxpayer money as they are not even qualified for the positions they hold. I'm tired of my taxpayers paying for this monstrosity. Stay tuned to your local news. They will yet again be covering this. Our petition to Sam Page and the St. Louis County Council is currently at 18,000 signatures. It calls for the termination of Vanessa Duris and her current leadership team at ACC. Don't let political deals continue to hurt the animals of St. Louis County. And for crying out loud, stop the use of the barbaric hard-stick euthanasia immediately. Why on earth do you allow this to continue? Anyone interested in more information regarding the petition can email me at
That's 20 minutes, Madam Chair.
dslim3@yahoo.com.
Our final speaker this evening is Jason Moore.
Good evening, Jason Moore, 63021. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank Vice Chair Harder for bringing the ethics probe to life to investigate Dr. Page's double-dipping. I hope this gets fast-tracked, and if you can add other names, you know you can count on me to add mine. Councilman Fitch, I'm not sure if you've heard any words yet on your audit request of the Page administration, but we would love to hear about it here out in the public. Now redirecting over to the KC that's decided to reopen. Where are we at with St. Louis County, Dr. Page, and Dr. Garza, and Dr. Khan? Where are the metrics that prove that we still need to be underneath these draconian rules and regulations that keep us away from, especially our restaurant neighbors, from opening up 100%? You don't have it, otherwise you would have shared it a long time ago, and I know state legislators have asked for it multiple times, and you've just ignored them. It just proves that you guys have nothing. So when the government fails to act in good faith, it is time for the citizens to return the favor and kind and just ignore what the government is commanding them to do. So just so as you know, I've stopped wearing my mask. I will go in wherever I damn well please because I'm done with obeying rules laid out by the government that they cannot back up with actual metrics to prove that they are needed. I am done, and I really hope that the restaurants around the county and any other business that feels threatened to just open up and just be done with it. They can't get everybody, not even that they can because it's not against the law, right? So in closing, all I can say is I can't wait to see your bright, lovely, smiling faces when you get back to in-person council meetings again, especially you, Dr. Page. And with that, everyone have a pleasant evening. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Madam Chair, it's come to my attention that Ms. LeBob has accessed the meeting, and she had originally signed up to speak, so if you would allow it, we will
Please do so. Please do so.
Thank you. Next, our final speaker this evening is Lynn LeBob.
Thank you very much, Chris Howard and Ernie. I really appreciate all your help. As a resident of District 6, and I would ask the other council members to defer to the recommendation for a no vote or any change in the zoning with the property. We have enough of the oil shops and the car washes. With all due respect, our restaurants have been hit very hard due to the draconian lockdown from the socialists there. And I also want to say in regards to the Problem Properties Unit, for the professionalism and results-oriented, especially Officer Robert Renick. And right now, we just really appreciate it because we have several properties that have a pile of lumber right on the county road, which is very dangerous, as well as a piano on the front porch, and also tires in the next property. So it's very important that we do have the Problem Properties Unit. And as well, I wanted to chime in on something, too. As far as the vitamin D3 and the zinc and ivermectin, the vaccines are not good for us, and I have always been a vaccine person. However, I have, from vast experience, the D3 and zinc and ivermectin, that's what we ought to have done instead of allowing the pharmaceutical companies and Fauci to make money off our lockdown deal decision. So with, in regards to, we just, I really want to say a huge thank you for the District 6. I've lived in Afton all my life, and to see the progress of the streets and the lights, we really appreciate that. Again, we are in desperate need of the Problem Properties Unit. If you come down my street, you'll see exactly why. So it's extremely important that we continue to keep our properties up and everything. I know that would be a good thing for the reassessments, right, which are way out of line as far as I'm concerned. So thank you for your time. I appreciate everything that you've done. Chris and Ernie, a big shout-out.
Thank you. That is all the speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, and thank all of you for coming and expressing your views and concerns with us. We really appreciate that. A report of the county executive, please.
Good evening. As I discussed last week, our focus in administering vaccine to the community is on equity. And while mass vaccination events can be efficient and effective for many individuals, not everybody can make it to one. So our strategy involves offering a wide variety of targeted events that provide vaccinations for the most vulnerable among us. One such event will occur this Thursday. Together with our partners at Death Inc. and ParaQuad, the Department of Public Health will offer a special vaccination opportunity for individuals who live with hearing loss or other disabilities. The event from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Thursday will be offered at our John C. Murphy Health Center in Berkeley, one of our most accessible locations. Interpreters will be on hand, and special assistance will be given to all who need it, and help with transportation also is available. Registration is required for this event. To register or find out more, please contact ParaQuad at 314-289-4320. I ask council members to help get the word out about this upcoming event. Meanwhile, we continue to offer walk-in vaccination events where no appointment is necessary. One is tomorrow from 9 a.m. to noon at the Heights Community Center at 8001 Dale Avenue in Richmond Heights. On Thursday from 9 a.m. to noon, we will have a walk-up event at the Hayman Park Community Center at 975 Pennsylvania Avenue in University City. And on Friday from 8 a.m. to 2 p.m., we have a walk-up event at the Bridgetown Recreation Center, 4201 Fifi Road. A list of all of our vaccination events can be found on the homepage of STLcorona.com. About 40% of county residents have received at least one dose of vaccine, and 25% have been fully vaccinated. Those are good numbers, but not nearly enough to win this fight. At this point, an average of 135 county residents are diagnosed with COVID-19 every day, and that's still too many. And there's evidence that new variants of COVID-19 are present in the county. So that's why we continue to proceed with caution, carefully following the guidance of the CDC, our health systems, and our public health experts. I'm sure all of you saw today the CDC released new guidance on mask-wearing for those who are fully vaccinated. President Biden said this afternoon, we are making great progress with vaccinations, with 2/3 of our seniors fully vaccinated. The gradual easing of restrictions is made possible as more people get vaccinated. If you have not yet already, I encourage you to get a vaccine this week. Our community partners, including the fire protection districts and departments, have been invaluable in making the vaccine widely accessible. Thanks to everyone for doing their part. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill Number 120, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $70,485.68 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and the sum of $81,761.18 from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund, all in support of payments required by the Northland, Grasso Plaza, Lee May Plaza, and Country Club Hills redevelopment plan agreements. Bill Number 121, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Police to accept reimbursements from the Missouri Department of Public Safety related to the FY 2020 Protection for Victims/Witnesses of Violent Crime Program for services provided to victims or witnesses of violent crimes, appropriating said funds, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 122, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,890 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Family Health Council. Bill Number 123, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Health to receive reimbursements from the Missouri Department of Health and Human Services related to summer food service program inspections, appropriating said funds, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Health to execute a participation agreement and other necessary documents. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Moving on to perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill Number 20.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
You're on mute, Councilwoman Trakus.
I am indeed. I apologize, Madam Chair. I moved to hold Bill Number 32.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill Number 266 is held.
Bill Number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Bill Number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill Number 75.
Bill Number 75 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 84, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read substitute.
Substitute Bill Number 2 for Bill Number 84, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county counselor to execute a contract with Lewis Rice LLC to provide legal services to St. Louis County.
I move for the adoption of Substitute Bill 1, or I'm sorry, 2 for Bill Number 84.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Uh, discussion. Councilwoman Fitch, and then Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, these are the outside legal council bills, 84, 85, 86, 87. As you know, we had a long discussion in a closed meeting about these bills last week. We did talk about some changes to this, but I'll have to tell you that really all we're seeing now, even with the substitute bill, are very little changes compared to what at least three of us on this council voted down on January 5th. And that's the infamous meeting where Cheryl Walton Gray was allowed to vote, and this bill was approved then. So really, all this changes adds some quarterly updates. There is some discussion in the first Bill 84 about removing Lewis Rice from issuing certain opinions and on COVID cases and related to that. But other than that, it doesn't at all address the issue that I think we all had on the MWBE, the minority in women-owned business enterprise, you know, to address that at all. I think all we heard was, we're doing the best we can. And there was a, I think Councilwoman Harder called this a blank check bill, these bills. So Subbill 1, basically all it did is said, okay, we're just going to limit these contracts to a year. You can spend as much as you want to on outside councils, as long as you do it within a year before you have to come back. One of my issues has been from day one, is that the council have some control over the caps and how much we're going to spend. We heard a lengthy discussion at our closed meeting about why that's bad strategy, legal strategy, to put cap on there. However, the counselor herself said that there are caps on the contracts that are public documents anyway. So it really came down to who should have authority to set the caps, the counselor's office or this council? And I think the council should have some control over that. I also was waiting for a, we had heard about a disparity study. The county counselor had said that she would give us an opinion on that particular study. We have not received anything on that and whether or not we need one. We keep hearing, we can't put MWBE requirements on this because there's no study. So our question was, is, so tell us, do we have to do a study on this? We have no answer back on that. So and the bottom line is, is the counselor's office wants us to trust her again with her decision-making process on these type of things, and I'm just not there, even on Subbill 2. So I will be voting against all of these Subbill 2s on these four pieces of legislation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Trakus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I'm sure you all expect, I am diametrically opposed and disagree with Councilwoman Fitch. The Subbill addresses almost all of the concerns raised in the closed session committee of the whole. The explanation from the counselor's office regarding minority in women-owned business enterprises was direct, and that is, quite frankly, it simply creates a And that is, quite frankly, it simply creates a quota which is illegal. We cannot do that. The simple fact of the matter with respect to this and the other three bills is, this council needs to decide if it is going to provide and authorize the county with competent, expert counsel to present aggressive defenses in current lawsuits that are pending before the courts as we speak. And so, I'm not going to hold these bills. We're going to decide tonight, up or down, as a body, whether or not we're going to protect the county. And if the majority chooses not to do so, then that'll be on them. But the idea that this bill is a blank check is just convenient narrative. It's a one-year grant on termination on these bills, every one of them. You'll have the opportunity to come back, take a look at what's happened, and decide if you want to authorize another contract. But the idea that we should sit and wait and be paralyzed because we want to claim that it's a blank check or we want to claim that there's issues we have that haven't been resolved. Again, I'm going to say it again. The simple fact of the matter is, the choice is to you. Are you going to provide the county with competent, expert, aggressive counsel to defend these lawsuits? That's why I'm moving these bills forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Webb?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Councilwoman Trakas and Councilman Fitch, for your perceptions and your feedback of what you studied. My concern is, one, I did want the disparity study so we can get the details because we're often told how we want to have that diversity included in our council office as well. The other thing is, we keep hearing that we want to have adequate and strong representatives and attorneys for our court cases. And I keep going back to, but we have all the counselors in our current council office, and why can't they help with these? I know that there are specialties, but there are quite a few counselors in this office. And they have had this litigation before them for quite some time. And so, I am concerned about being able to support more attorney fees and not be able to address some of the other issues that go before our council. And so, this back and forth about providing a blank check or having strong lawyers, I don't believe that's the true issue here. I think the true issue here is us being able to decide if the people in our current county council office can do the job.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Were you done? I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilwoman Dunaway?
So, I just want to remind everybody what we heard earlier in the Justice Services hearing and what we keep hearing over and over again from across the county. We pay crap. Our people are overworked. They're underappreciated. And I just, to provide some context on the specialization in the legal practice, and I'm sorry I missed your hearing the other day, but juggling a lot over here. At my day job, we have fifteen hundred lawyers in my firm. We're spread all across the globe. And each one of those fifteen hundred lawyers is very uniquely specialized. We have a few generalists throughout my firm, but those generalists are nothing like what you might see as a generalist in the county counselor's office. And I just, we don't have the bandwidth internally. We don't have the expertise. And we don't have the depth of resources and support to be able to manage these big, huge, multimillion-dollar lawsuits against the county. We just don't. And that is why counties and cities and businesses across the country go to firms like mine to make sure that there is that depth of experience and resources to be able to defend ourselves to the fullest extent possible. And I would just ask you all to consider that maybe Ernie and I have a better sense into how the legal industry works than some of the other council members. And that maybe in this instance, you can trust our judgment on this, even if you don't want to trust the county counselor's office. And I know I've said this before, and it's just the height of hypocrisy for some of you to have gone to some of the most expensive legal counsel there is in St. Louis and to have this bill that got completely out of hand and then not extend that same courtesy, that same level of support, that same legal representation to the county that you say you want to protect. So I would just ask you all to please, like, think through what it is that you want, and if there is a way to get to these bills in a place where we can agree that we just do not have the bandwidth and expertise and depth of resources inside St. Louis County Counselor's Office that we need to properly defend ourselves.
Thank you. Councilwoman Trakas?
Thank you. I would like to respond to Councilwoman Webb and Councilwoman Dunaway to provide some perspective and context. The city counselor's office has twice the number of attorneys the county counselor's office does. The city is one-third the size of St. Louis County. And so the idea that somehow we have all these attorneys that are free to work on these cases is a little bit inaccurate. Secondly, let's remember the last time the counselor's office handled a complex discrimination suit. The result, a $20 million verdict. So we don't have the luxury of waiting or denying the county the expertise and the specialization it needs to defend these lawsuits. And I would urge all of you to look past our personal positions and think about the need to protect the county in these litigations. Thank you.
Councilwoman Webb?
Madam Chair, thank you. And I apologize upfront because I know we want to move along and just vote and keep it moving. But I do want to say this. I respect both of my colleagues, Councilwoman Dunaway and Councilman Trakas. It's so hard for me to sit here and try to work through this without bringing up my own experience because that's my point of reference. But I do believe some of these situations we find ourselves in the county, we bring upon ourselves. From the lawsuit that was amongst our current counsel, from the 45 lawsuits that I'm sitting here reading, from discrimination and all kind of things that we have, in some cases, brought upon ourselves. And then we scream mercy with our hands tied behind our backs to say, "Make it happen. Make it stop. Make the pain stop." When we cause the pain on ourselves. And yes, we are in this situation, and we can't cry over spilled milk. But the problem is, we can't just keep saying, "Oh, well, we don't have the specialty, so let's get another lawyer." When do we take a step back and say, "Okay, we have 45 lawsuits that say we need specialties in this area, and we make sure that we have adequate people in our council office to address that." Instead of every time have to come before with another special situation. It perturbs me that we're caught in this situation, and then we got to go back and forth about, "Well, do you really care about the council? Will you support? If you want to protect the council, then you should do this." But then the council and the members in the council office cause a lot of this pain on itself. I'm sorry. I needed to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Trakas.
Thank you. We're going to have that opportunity to staff the counselor's office. We've had it in the past. The simple fact of the matter, this body has never had the courage to say, "We're going to increase the counselor's office budget by a significant magnitude to justify the hiring at a reasonable salary of perhaps twice as many lawyers as it currently has." Then, and only then, will the argument that the counselor's office is staffed sufficiently to handle these types of cases will have merit. Until that happens, the simple reality is, we have a counselor's office that is half the size of a city that is one-third the size of our county. So, it's just, you're going to have that opportunity in November, and let's see what you want to do then. But the point is, we're here and we're now. These lawsuits are active and pending, and the county needs competent expertise to present aggressive defenses to these lawsuits. And that's the choice before us tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Fitch?
I just, it's amazing that we're having a discussion about how incompetent our legal representation is in the county. And just using Councilman Trakas', he said, "We need competent legal representation," which means we don't have competent legal representation in the county counselor's office. I think that needs to be addressed as well, just like increasing their budget to give them some specialty, to give them the resources they need. And Councilwoman Dunaway, the last time you told this council that we need to listen to you and Councilman Trakas because your lawyers was the chair and vice chair situation. And we saw how that ended up. So I'm finished. Councilman Trakas would say that ship has sailed with me. So, thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Any, Councilwoman Trakas?
Thank you. I'm not going to let Councilman Fitch put words in my mouth. When I used the word competent, I meant specialists, attorneys that are practiced and experienced in civil rights litigation, employment discrimination. It has nothing to do with the current attorneys in the counselor's office who are hard-working lawyers. Secondly, since you brought it up, I will go there. So we're all clear on it. For starters, the judge's decision in the leadership case confirmed the counselor's opinion that, in fact, Councilwoman Walton Gray's term did, in fact, carry over until apparently there was a secret oath taken on January 4th or 5th. So the idea that somehow that advice was somehow wrong is clearly a false narrative. The simple fact of the matter is Judge Alvis's ruling makes it clear. The terms did, in fact, carry over until Councilwoman Webb took a secret oath, never said anything to the county counselor's office, certainly never appeared before this body to claim that somehow she had taken her oath and should be allowed to represent her district or that Councilwoman Walton Gray should not be allowed to vote. So, the idea that somehow we got bad advice from the counselor's office, sorry, absolutely wrong.
Thank you. Councilwoman Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Fitch, I'm going to go back to the original argument in a moment, but I can't let that last statement that you shared mislead our community. This council put me in a position where my community voice would be shut down. And I came here to make sure that North County voice in District 4 was always heard. Whether you all did it intentionally or was it, it was an oversight in the charter? I don't know. Wasn't here, can't be a part of a game when I wasn't even a participant. But once I arrived, it was my responsibility to make sure I did all that I could to ensure that I was eligible and available to be a part of that January 5th meeting. It was my decision to be ignored. It was the members of this council's decision to ignore me. Moving back to our original conversation, we keep talking about these lawsuits. These lawsuits and handling the lawsuits, what I'm trying to get at to this council is we need to deal with the core of the issue, whether it's discrimination, sexism, or any other type of wrongdoing towards individuals. We need to make sure that we look within and deal with the source of the issues and not keep putting a Band-Aid and expecting us to put money over these lawsuits that we don't have. Just like you said, the council office is understaffed, the Department of Revenue is understaffed, the Public Safety is understaffed, the Justice Center is understaffed. So when it comes to budget time, those are the things that I'm going to put priorities on. And you can all bet your bottom dollar and hold me accountable to it. That's what I'm going to do. Madam Chair, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? I think the motion was to adopt substitute bill number 2 for bill number 84. That was a motion and a second. Is that correct, Councilwoman Trakas?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
All right. All in favor of adoption of the substitute, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
No.
Chair is in doubt. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Webb, no. Councilmember Harder?
I agree with everything what Councilwoman Webb said. No.
Time for discussions over, Madam Chair. We're voting now.
Let me run the meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt sub bill number 2 for bill number 84, there are four noes and three ayes.
So substitute bill number 2 for bill number 84, that substitute has failed. Councilwoman Trakas?
Yes, and at that point, Madam Chair, I'm going to move to perfect sub bill 1 for bill number 84.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Discussion? Let's just go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Webb? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm just letting everybody know where we are. We are back to substitute number 1 for bill number 84.
Correct. Councilmember Webb?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on substitute bill number 1 for bill number 84, to perfect it, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 84 has failed. Councilwoman Trakas?
If we're going to move to bill number 85, I'll move to adopt, I think we have a substitute bill, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Excuse me.
We have, now, we went back to bill number 84 without the substitute. Beth, do we have to deal with bill number 84?
No. Oh.
Beth?
I believe your clerk was about to answer your question.
Yes. No, Madam Chair. We don't have to deal with bill number 84.
Okay, thank you.
My fault. I apologize, Councilwoman Trakas. We are now on to substitute bill number 1 for bill number 85, and we have a substitute bill.
Correct. Councilwoman Trakas?
Would you like me to read it? Would you like me to read the substitute bill? Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 85, introduced by Councilmember Trakas, An Ordinance Authorizing the County Counselor To Execute a Contract with Littler Mendelson, P.C. To Provide Legal Services to St. Louis County.
I move to adopt sub bill 2 for bill number 85.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dunaway?
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Webb?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt sub bill number 2 for bill number 85, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 85 has failed. Councilwoman Trakas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to perfect sub bill 1 for bill number 85.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Was there a second?
I thought there was. Councilwoman Dunaway, did she not second it?
No, but I will second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. Councilmember Webb?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to perfect sub bill number 1 for bill number 85, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 85 has failed.
Moving on to substitute bill number 1 for bill number 86, we have a substitute bill.
Councilwoman Trakas?
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 86, introduced by Councilmember Trakas, An Ordinance Authorizing the County Counselor To Execute a Contract with Hepler Broome, LLC To Provide Legal Services to St. Louis County.
I move for the adoption of sub bill 2 for sub bill number 1 for bill number 86.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Discussion? Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Webb.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt sub bill number two for bill number 86, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 86 has failed. Councilman Trakus?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move to, uh, perfect sub bill one for bill number 86.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Webb.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to perfect sub bill number one for bill number 86, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 86 has failed.
Moving on to substitute bill number one for bill number 87, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 87, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county councilor to execute a contract with outside counsel to provide legal services to St. Louis County in disciplinary matters of the Department of Police.
I move for the adoption of sub bill number two for sub bill number one of, to bill number 87.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Roll, uh, discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt sub bill number two for bill number 87, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 87 has failed. Councilman Trakus?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move to perfect sub bill one for bill number 87.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway, sorry.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to perfect sub bill number one for bill number 87, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 87 has failed.
Moving on to substitute, excuse me, catch up here. Moving on to bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 88.
Bill number 88 is held, excuse me, is held.
Bill number 112, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move to perfect number, bill number 112.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries, bill number 112 is perfected.
One moment, Madam Chair. Moving on to bill number 113, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect bill number 113, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries, bill number 113 is perfected.
Bill number 114, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number 114.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries, bill number 114 is perfected.
Bill number 115, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move to perfect bill number 115.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Bill number 115 is perfected.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I'm moved to perfect bill number 116.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries, bill number 116 is perfected.
Bill number 117, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number 117.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries, bill number 117 is perfected.
Bill number 118, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect bill 118.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries, bill number 118 is perfected.
Bill number 119, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Uh, Madam Chair, I received an email from Councilwoman Clancy about this bill, and I didn't get a chance to read it to write before the meeting, so I will hold this, and we'll have a discussion this week, and so please hold on the order of business.
Bill number one, I'm sorry, bill number 119 is held. Moving on to final passage, and do I, and if you could remove the voting, uh, from our screen, please, here.
I don't show the voting.
Yeah, it's on mine.
Sorry.
Let me, let me do an X here and see if I can get rid of it. There we go, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320.
Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
So, there was an agenda item on the communications where I was requesting to reschedule a hearing at Committee of the Hall for our PACE bill. This is a bill that would expand access in St. Louis County to the Missouri Clean Energy District. And I don't know if any of you saw that there was an article that appeared in a number of publications last week, um, about how the PACE program is operating and taking advantage of vulnerable, um, of vulnerable communities in desperate need for capital. And, um, I think we need to get to the bottom of what's going on and make sure that we are putting mechanisms in place to protect people from, um, from, from lenders who may not be giving them all of the information they need to make informed choices. So for now, I move to hold substitute bill number one for bill number 76.
And thank you so much for that, uh, Councilwoman Dunaway, we've had conversations about that, and, uh, we will schedule that as soon as we can possibly get that in. So with that, substitute bill number one for bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Please hold bill number 220.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 104, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 104, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 104, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 104 is finally passed.
Bill number 105, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 105, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 105, there are seven ayes.
Bill, bill number 105 is finally passed.
Bill number 106, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 106, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 106, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 106 is finally passed.
Bill number seven, I'm sorry, bill number 107, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 107, is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 107, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 1, 107 is finally passed.
Bill number 108, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final pass, bill number 108.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 108, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 108 is finally passed.
Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for adoption of, uh, bill 109.
We're looking at, uh, final passage?
I'm sorry, I'm looking through, I move for final passage of bill 109.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 109, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 109 is finally passed.
Bill number 110, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 110, is there a second?
Second, Fitch, in discussion?
Discussion, uh, Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, this is an example of a contract with an outside law firm given to us by the county councilor's office that has a cap in it, in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for reimbursement of reasonable and necessary expenses incurred by outside counsel. And we just had a big, long discussion about those other four bills, because they did not want a cap in there. So, I don't really understand what the difference is, where they agreed to have an cap in this one, but not the other four. So, I will be supporting this, because, uh, it has the cap in there, and that's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Councilman Trakus?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, the explanation for the cap was going through at length in our closed session by the county councilor, so Mr. Fitch knows the reason, that's all I have.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call, uh, Councilman Fitch?
Yes, I well, well aware and remember the discussion, and I see no substantive difference between this one and the other four that we just voted down, so that's all I have to say. Maybe you should stop.
Thank you. Any further discussion, seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 110, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 110 is finally passed.
Bill number 111, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Councilman Trakus?
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 111, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an emergency order providing for a temporary halt in residential evictions in St. Louis County in order to prevent the further spread of COVID-19 in the county, and declaring an emergency.
I move for the adoption of sub bill one for bill 111.
Second, Clancy.
Second, Webb.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, um, this is on final passage, please call the roll.
Uh, this just requires a voice vote, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, this is adoption of the substitute?
Right.
Okay, adoption of the substitute, was there any discussion? Seeing none, um, let me just say this, um, in the, in the substitute, and we had talked about this, uh, Councilman, uh, Trakus and I, and we had looked at a lot of the issues that came, he was, uh, could not make that, make that meeting, and, um, and so I do understand clearly what is the expectation here and what we are trying to do. No one wants anybody sitting out on a curb. Uh, it, it's, it's, it's hard to look at this bill and see that this bill is actually going to do that. Uh, I know that we are talking about evictions, I know that we have had gone back and forth with what is actually in this bill, uh, and when you look at this bill, you will have people who are making $200,000, and they will be protected in this. Um, you have people who can be evicted if they don't take the COVID test and share those results with, uh, their landlord. with, uh, their landlord. There are some major problems, uh, with this legislation, and although we understand the intent, we, we absolutely do not want people evicted. I don't think this bill was very well-written. Uh, I did not see any substantive changes in the substitute, and so I just want to make sure that we don't have the council uh, in a predicament here that we're gonna have to have another quote lawsuit to get us out of this. So those are some of the concerns that I do have, uh, with the current legislation as it, as it, as it sits right now, and so I think it, it would be, it would be good if we can address some of those issues, but I, I, I hear you, and we're gonna move forward. Councilman Tracus, thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe the substitute bill, uh, addresses the income level and has removed it. So that is no longer in the bill, or the sub bill rather. Um, and I think it addresses the other concerns as well, or at least many of them were articulated in that meeting. So I would encourage all of us to get behind this bill and, um, provide what amounts to now simply another month of, um, protection for those that may well need it. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Harder, I saw his hand first, Councilwoman Clancy, and then you'll be next.
Yes, thank you. Um, a couple of things I'm confused about. I know the, the sub cleared up a few things. Um, but one thing I noticed is that it took away, as, uh, Chair, rid of Dave said is the upper end. It had, you know, ninety-nine thousand or whatever, and now there's nothing in there. So I think that's what, uh, the chairwoman is saying, that there is no upper limit on, uh, protection on this bill. So you could make two hundred grand or more uh, on this bill, and I've got a problem with that. Also, from the people I've talked to, even this, even though it's cleaned up from what it was before, uh, if we pass this, this will most likely go straight to court, you know, within a week or two, so, uh, I don't want to add any more legal bills to our county at this point, so I've got an issue.
And if, uh, Councilman Tracus? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clancy.
I'm, I, um, wanted to go back to what Councilman Tracus shared. I'm not, I, we completely removed the income piece that you spoke of, Councilwoman Days, so I hope you were able to get the actual copy of the bill, um, because we realized too, we didn't need that, because we've got a section that it talks about covered persons under the bill, so basically, um, that helps to define people at risk of doubling up or being homeless, um, are considered covered under this bill. Um, we heard some really moving testimony tonight from some members of the community, um, who are experiencing eviction, and I, I can't even imagine the impact that has had on them, on their, them and their families, even as folks who are, um, who are currently working, and um, I just, you know, this bill, I, I think this is a step. I don't think it goes far enough, but I do think it's a step. There's much more we all need to do in the coming weeks and months to address this eviction crisis. Um, but this bill will really help a lot of people, um, and so I, I wholeheartedly support it, and I really thank Councilman Tracus for sponsoring it and working behind the scenes over the past couple of days to address the concerns that were raised over the past week. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a couple of things. One, uh, let, let's be realistic here. The idea that somehow this is open-ended now, and people making two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars a year will be able to use this legislation to avoid eviction is that, as absurd as that sounds. No one making that kind of money is under any threat of eviction. This bill addresses a true need for people that desperately need what amounts to one more month of a safety net, should, uh, the, um, CDC order be struck down, which is a big question in and of itself. Um, so the idea that somehow because there's no mon, dollar amount, it, it's too generous, this really is a false narrative. Um, and lastly, uh, we need to act as a body to help people that desperately need it now, and, um, quit playing politics. Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and the idea that there could be some sort of litigation, let me finish, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, is a hollow threat. We got a detailed, comprehensive memo today, along with the sub bill, addressing all of the alleged legal infirmities with this bill, and quite frankly, it's pretty clear that there are none. There's no basis to question the legitimacy or the legality of this legislation. If there is a lawsuit filed, I'm reasonably confident it will wind up dismissed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I do apologize for breaking you in, Councilman Tracus. I thought you were done.
No worries.
Council, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my issue is a, really a foundational issue. This bill came to Councilman Tracus from the county executive. So my question, and I think the county executive is the only one that can answer this, why are you bringing us a health bill? It's the first time since the pandemic started you've asked this council for any input or any vote on any kind of order related to a health bill. So why couldn't you just have the Department of Public Health Director issue an order like all of the others and say, bam, we're gonna, we're not going to have evictions? So I don't know if the county executive is in a position where he can answer why this is coming to us and none of the other health bills have.
Is that a question for the county executive?
Yes, ma'am.
County executive? You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Uh, the advice I got from the county councilor's office that, um, that this needed to be an ordinance, and that because of the nature of evictions and their, um, relationship with the court and eviction law, that this needed to be an ordinance, and that's why I followed their advice and asked the council to join me in this very important issue for which we heard some very moving testimony from.
Okay, I didn't answer what, uh, just so you're just going on the legal advice from the county councilor's office, that we need an ordinance for this, but we didn't for any of the other mandates. Okay, just want to make sure I had that right. So my feeling is, is this is a state action, and we're going to be, if we pass this ordinance, we're going to be telling the state courts, guess what, you can't do this. So then it comes to enforcement, and that was part of the council's opinion about enforcement. There's no penalty in here for enforcement of this. So if a sheriff's deputy gets an order from a judge, and the judge says, go evict this person, and the deputy says, no, Judge, I'm not going to, because I'll be in violation of this new ordinance. So what if the judge then votes in contempt? Who does he listen to? Who's his master? Is it the county, his employer, or is it the state court? This is putting those sheriff's deputies in a horrible position to have to decide to disobey a judge or disobey a county ordinance. I am absolutely in favor of anything that will keep people in their homes. However, this isn't the right way to go. Now, let, let's think about this for a minute. Let's assume that this actually passes tonight. And it passes. So unless there's two-thirds of the council that votes on it, it doesn't take effect until fifteen days after the county executive signs it. There is a sunset provision in this. So it expires on June thirtieth, unless extended later by the council. So really, in reality, this is only gonna be in effect for nineteen days if it passes and if it's legal. So I don't understand the purpose of this, other than to use what I heard about political purposes. I think that's how this got started. It was a polit.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I have the floor. You want, you want to interrupt?
Uh, we will not.
I'll wait, trust me.
Okay, so at any rate, um, it'll be in effect for nineteen days if the council passes it, and again, think about the position we're putting these sheriff's deputies in. Disobey the judge or disobey the county ordinance to be disciplined by the, by, by their employer. It's a terrible position to be in. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. Um, how'd you like to be subject to eviction in those last teen, not last nineteen days, Mr. Fitch? Number one. Number two, just so you know, courts enforce laws, legislative bodies pass them and make law. And that's what's happening tonight. So if we make this law, it will supersede any order of Judge Burton. So I'm not worried about that or any state statute. You've got a comprehensive legal memorandum addressing all of those points today. So let's just go ahead and try to create some protection for people that need it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah. How many children were evicted in St. Louis County in the past nineteen days? We listened this, we listened earlier to the moving testimony from Mr. and Mrs. Liddell. Mr. Liddell shared that he's a janitor. Mrs. Liddell shared that she is a schoolteacher, um, and also working as a, an early childhood educator, um, you know, doing incredibly noble work, and she and her husband have to face or facing eviction. Think about how much of their dignity was stripped away from them when that sheriff came to the door. But we need to put ourselves in the shoes of people who are really hurting right now. And this is going to help a lot of people. Like I said, it's a step. It's not perfect, but let's have some humanity.
Councilman Fitch.
Everyone sympathizes with those people. I'm telling you that this bill, if it passes, has no effect on that. Because what's going to happen, what are we going to do when a judge says, you can't overrule me, county council, with your ordinance? Go, go serve this eviction deputy. And if, and by the way, one of the other things I suggested during that meeting was that the sheriff's deputies be there and hand the paperwork to anyone that's about to be evicted, evicted, especially five days beforehand. Tell them how to avoid being evicted. I think that there's plenty of steps that we can do without this flawed ordinance, uh, to protect those families. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill applies to landlords, not sheriff's deputies, and, uh, so again, it's all misdirection, false narrative. Simple fact of the matter is, are we going to help people that desperately need it or not? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fitch.
Well, you've seen the opinion from the county councilor's office. It says the sheriff's deputy can be disciplined as a county employee for disobeying the ordinance. So to say it doesn't affect them isn't true. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. I think we will, uh, adopting the substitute. If, am I correct, Diane?
Yes, ma'am. You have a motion and a second.
All right, all in, well, let's go ahead and call the roll on this one. All right.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute bill number one for bill number one eleven, there are three four, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, four ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
So you have adopted the substitute. Councilman Tracus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to revoke rule nineteen to suspend rule nine to take up substitute bill one for bill number one eleven on final passage.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Is this, this is a roll call?
Yes, I'd like to show.
It doesn't have to be.
No, no. Doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be. It just requires a majority, but you probably will want.
We gotta roll, we gotta call the roll.
Yeah. I want the roll call. So Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Abstain.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to take up bill number one eleven on final passage, there are four ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
Oh, you have moved the, uh, advance of bill, uh, number one, one, substitute bill number one for bill number one 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 to the final passage order of business.
Thank you.
To take it up.
Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. Uh, I move for final passage of substitute bill number one for bill number one eleven.
Second.
Is there a second?
Dunaway.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Abstain.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to finally pass substitute bill number one for bill number one eleven, there are four ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
And this is the, well, we will need seven votes for this? Is that correct?
No, ma'am. No.
We are advancing this to final passage order of business?
No, we, we, we did that previously when we invoked rule nineteen to suspend the rules that just required a majority to take this, to take up the substitute bill on final passage, and now Councilman Tracus moved to finally pass the substitute bill, and you have four um, ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
And so this, that means this bill has finally passed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now, I believe there was an emergency of some kind. Is, is that, do we move that at this point?
No, the emergency clause required five votes. There were only four.
All right. All right. So then that means, uh, substitute bill number one 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 is finally passed.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to resolutions.
How many resolutions do we have?
Madam Chair, we have five resolutions this evening.
Right.
First, excuse me, our first resolution introduced by councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, and Webb.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Um, yes, this is actually, um, the same resolution I had on the agenda that passed a couple of weeks ago to stand in solidarity with the Asian-American community here in St. Louis County and to stand um, against all acts of hatred and discrimination. There was an error in, in the names of a couple of the organizations, so I talked with Legal about the way to to fix that issue, and they said, just voted on, vote on it again. So that's what this is. I won't have you read it, Kevin, um, but I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
Discussion.
Roll call, uh, discussion. Councilman Tracus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we proceed to a vote, um, I think it's important that we avail ourself of a few facts. The two thousand nineteen criminal victimization report prepared by the United States Department of Justice states, and I quote, "Of those committing violence against Asians, you discover that twenty-four percent of such attacks are committed by whites, twenty-four percent are committed by fellow Asians, seven percent by Hispanics, and twenty-seven and a half percent by African-Americans," close quote. Looking at last year, in two thousand twenty in New York City, where the anti-Asian hate crimes soared, according to New York Police Department data analyzed by the Center for the Study of Hate and Extremism, only two of the twenty-one people arrested for attacks on Asians were white. Eleven were African-American, six were white Hispanics, and one was a black Hispanic. It is wrong, and we cannot easily, accurately, or truthfully categorize or lump these terrible acts into the false and frankly dishonest, woke narrative of white supremacy. In the words of Linda Yang, the director of Washington Asians for Equality, quote, "American Asians don't need narratives. We need the truth. We need the people who commit these terrible acts to be condemned, prosecuted, and properly identified, no matter what race they are," close quote. Because this resolution is based on a false premise, devoid of objective facts, and perpetuates a false and frankly dishonest narrative, I cannot support it, and frankly, neither should any of you. If you want to simply and honestly condemn these acts without seeking to assign fault or blame, that is, that is a different matter, and certainly, um, I would support that. But as written, this resolution is without factual basis for the current attacks and does not merit any support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are four ayes and three noes.
Motion carries. Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two this evening introduced by councilmembers Days and Tracus in the matter of the application for a conditional use permit in C-three shopping district at the northwest quadrant of Lindbergh Boulevard and Tesson Ferry Road to authorize an oil change facility, P.C. twenty-two dash twenty, S.T.L. Quilu One LLC.
Councilman Tracus.
I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the adoption of, of resolution number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Discussions. Please call the roll. Uh, Councilwoman Harder, I'm sorry.
I was wondering if, um, Councilman Tracus can explain why we are doing a resolution on a zoning matter? I'm kind of confused on that.
That's the way it was presented to me, um, Councilman Harder, from the councilor's office, as the proper way to do it in terms of adopting the decision by the PIC committee to reverse the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And does it have any kind of effect or rule of law or binding effect on anything?
I think it does exactly what it says it's going to do, is reverse the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, authorizing the conditional use permit. And if I'm wrong, the county councilor is free to weigh in.
Can I get, uh, county councilor's opinion, Madam Chair?
Certainly. Beth?
Thank you. I agree with Councilman Tracus.
Could, can you explain?
Well, he's asking you to explain why we had to go through a resolution process to do that.
I, I don't remember it, that ever happening before.
You are asking, well, I don't want to give legal advice in the middle of a council meeting. This is the way it's been done uh, since I've been the county counselor, and this is the procedure that sets out. It's a type of resolution that is appropriate for this type of, um, action by the council.
Uh, Councilwoman Harder, I don't think we've ever had a rejection of a, of a conditional use permit before, at least in, in my turn. use permit before, at least in, in my turn, my tenure here. So it's new to me. I, I don't have an idea.
Right. And that's, that's my question is if the zoning board said what they said, we rejected it, and now we're agreeing back? I'm, I'm confused with all the back and forth.
No, we're not. We're, we are, we are saying, yes, we are rejecting this. And this is the process that we go by in order to reject, uh, what the planning commission said to us.
Basically adopting the decision of the PIC committee.
Okay. So.
Councilman Harder?
Um, I'm gonna abstain on this.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Abstain.
Councilmember Dunaway? Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are six ayes and one abstention.
Thank you. Motion carries. Resolution number two is adopted.
Resolution number three this evening introduced by councilmembers Days and Trakus in the matter of the application for a conditional use permit in C2 Shopping District at the South Side of Graboy Road, approximately 350 feet west of Tesson Ferry Road to authorize a car wash facility, PC 23-20 Club Car Wash Operating LLC.
I move for the adoption of resolution number three, please.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Discussion.
Just one comment, Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch?
I meant to say this on the last one as well. I always defer to the district council man or woman, whoever's representing this area. Um, I know we can vote in different ways, uh, but that council member has to stand for election or reelection in that area. So I tend to listen to, uh, their feelings and, and obviously Councilman Trakus felt strongly about, uh, denying this. So I'll support that. Thank you.
Councilman Trakus?
Uh, I want to thank and appreciate Councilman Fitch's support on this. And he's right. Um, each of us represents the constituents in our district. I heard from many, many constituents regarding both of these measures. Um, and as the one woman said tonight, it is their neighborhood. And, and we have to respect that. And that's why, um, I, uh, fought so hard to try and get the PIC to look at this a different way. So I appreciate, uh, all the council's support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Um, I will go along with Councilman Trakus on this one. Um, I'll say aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Um, on resolution number three, the motion is adopted.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Resolution number four this evening introduced by councilmember Days.
Please read the resolution, uh, Kevin?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Halbert Sullivan, founder and CEO of Fathers and Family Support Center in St. Louis, was born in Memphis, Tennessee, the oldest of eight siblings raised by their single mother, Many Wilson, a strong and proud woman who taught her children to respect themselves and others and to value education and their faith. And whereas Mr. Sullivan passed away at his home in St. Charles on April 15th, 2021. And whereas during his life, Mr. Sullivan spoke about how he overcame drug addiction and periods of incarceration, and that he went on to earn an associate's degree from St. Louis Community College, a bachelor's degree from Fontbonne University, and a master of social work degree from Washington University in St. Louis. And whereas Mr. Sullivan founded Fathers and Family Support Center, the center, in 1997 with the intent of transforming absent fathers into nurturing parents. And since its founding, the center has helped more than 18,000 fathers become financially and emotionally involved parents. And whereas the center utilizes methods and strategies developed by Mr. Sullivan and aimed at creating responsible fathers and community members, as well as positive outcomes for children. And whereas in 2016, the center expanded their services to include a quote, "Mom's Project," end quote, to help women develop skills for responsible parenting. And whereas Mr. Sullivan was the recipient of a gold pin for the President's Volunteer Service Award and a Lifetime Achievement Award from the National Partnership of Community Leadership, was named the 2017 Nonprofit Executive of the Year in St. Louis, and has been honored by the NAACP, the Missouri Association of Social Welfare, Washington University, and the Governor of Missouri. And whereas it is appropriate for the county council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause and recognize a man so devoted to service, to others, and the betterment of, of his community. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council expresses, expresses its deepest gratitude for the life and legacy of Halbert Sullivan and its sincere condolences to his loved ones. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the family of Halbert Sullivan as a permanent token of the council's sincere appreciation of a life well lived.
Thank you very much, Kevin. And, uh, the services for Mr. Sullivan are this evening are, they're going on right now. And of course, we're here and not able to attend, but this is a, uh, a sorely, uh, needed, um, uh, o- opportunity. And, um, uh, it, it's really hard. It's really hard to discuss how impactful he has been with basically working with fathers who really don't have any outs or options at all. And so I'm appreciative of the, of the, of the family, uh, for loaning him to us for the number of years that he has. I, his death was sudden. And, uh, so here we are. So with that, I do move for the adoption of resolution number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Clancy.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, if, if I may, I would love to be added as a co-sponsor, Madam Chair. Um, I had the opportunity to work with Mr. Sullivan and some of his team members on a project a couple of years ago. And he was an incredible human. Um, we were really lucky to have him here, um, doing the work that he did. And I know he's going to be sorely missed by the community. Um, so thank you for your nice words and for putting this resolution together.
Absolutely. And Madam Clerk, will you add Councilwoman Clancy's name to the resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number four, there are seven ayes.
Well, resolution number four is adopted.
Our final resolution this evening, Madam Chair, resolution number five, introduced by councilmembers Fitch and Days.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas Colleen Wossinger was elected to three terms on the St. Louis County Council by the voters of the third council district, serving from 2006 to 2018. And whereas throughout her service as a council member, Colleen was a consistent supporter of and advocate for the county's Department of Parks and Recreation. And whereas, Colleen was a particularly strong advocate for the creation of a dog park in Queenie Park in West St. Louis County and sponsored legislation for the project. And whereas, Colleen's efforts resulted in a five-acre off-leash dog park, which features separate areas for large and small dogs, a pavilion shelter, four permanent agility and skill stations, and watering stations. And whereas, Colleen joined the Board of Directors for the St. Louis County Parks Foundation, the foundation, in two, in twenty, excuse me, in 2019. And whereas, as a board member, Colleen has provided invaluable counsel and advice to further the foundation's mission to enhance the family experience through the county park system. And whereas, Colleen is a reliable volunteer at foundation fundraising functions and events, and is appreciated for being a great team player and knowledgeable board member. And whereas, in recognition of her contributions to St. Louis County, Colleen has been selected by the Missouri Park and Recreation Association to receive the Public Official Achievement Award. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council expresses its deepest gratitude to Colleen Wossinger and congratulates her on the occasion of being named a recipient of the Missouri Park and Recreation Association's Public Official Achievement Award. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Colleen Wossinger as a permanent token of the council's appreciation and admiration.
Thank you, Kevin. A well-deserved honor for the former councilwoman. Uh, so I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder?
Any discussion? Councilman Trakus?
Yes, um, I just wanted, you know, Colleen Wossinger, I served with her for a time and, um, she's a great friend. And, uh, with your permission and Mr. Councilman Fitch's permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. She was, uh, exemplary in the way she conducted herself as a council member.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will also say that when we had our project Homeless Connect, um, you know, council, uh, councilwoman at the time, Wossinger was very instrumental in helping us pull together that project Homeless Connect. So we do have a relationship as well. Councilman Harder?
Yes, if, uh, Councilman Fitch would, uh, so oblige, if I, if you could put me down as a co-sponsor as well. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number five, there are seven ayes.
Um, resolution number five is adopted. The motion carries.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I forgot to add that I'd like to thank, uh, the Parks Director, Tom Ott, for bringing this to me and letting me know about the award. So thank you to him.
Great. So noted. Moving on to.
Unfinished business.
Correct.
Item number one.
Please hold on the order of the business and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Please hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Please hold on the order of business and that same motion will apply through item number five.
Moving on to new business. We have two prepared orders this evening. Prepared order number one in the matter of the revocation of investment agent for the county employees' retirement fund.
Move for adoption of order number one?
Is there a second?
Trakus?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Order number one is adopted.
Prepared order number two in the matter of a proposed project for industrial development pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 100, RSMO Gateway Studios LLC.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number two is adopted. Moving on to other matters to come before the council at this particular time. Do we have any announcements? Councilwoman Webb?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. First, before I make my announcement, I want to make sure I share this. Tonight, uh, Councilman Fitch, I'm sorry, Councilman Trakus and myself had some direct and firm comments. And I want to thank him that we can have those disagreements and still be colleague. At the same time, he inspired me tonight. As I stood and watched him stand firmly with his community and making sure that we think about what the community wants and not what some investor or what some attorney, attorneys may, um, lobby before. He stood with his community. And that was my inspiration for being here and taking on this challenge as a county councilwoman for District Four. So thank you, Con, Councilman Trakus, for that inspiration tonight to remind me of why I came and sacrificed so much of my life to be a part of this county council. With that, with that being said, uh, Madam Chair, uh, the Justice Health and Welfare Committee will have a hearing on May 7th at 2:00 PM for the animal, uh, shelter. Uh, we invite those, it will be a public meeting. We invite all those who are interested to attend. We will have representatives there from the, uh, County Health Department and also, uh, advocates and supporters. So I just want to make sure everybody, I hear your comments. I, I understand your passion and I want to make sure that you know your voice will be heard concerning the animal shelter on May 7th at 2:00 PM. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Trakus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just want to, uh, thank Councilwoman Webb for, um, that acknowledgement, but also wanted to agree with her about something similar that went on tonight. And that was really spirited debate. And it was healthy to do it. Um, clearly, um, I'm disappointed about some things, not others. But the point is, we had a good spirited debate with passion and commitment on both sides. That's precisely what a legislative body is supposed to do. I'm proud of this council for doing it in a professional, buttoned-up way. Um, and I think going forward, we need to look for common ground where we can find it. Um, it's not to say we're always going to agree, but I just really appreciate all the members, their positions and their, um, patience in delivering their, um, in some instances, passionate, uh, statements. So I really think, uh, the council did a good job tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, Councilman Harder?
Yeah, just want to announce, uh, we're gonna try to schedule an ethics committee meeting for next Tuesday. And, um, the, uh, Ann will be in touch with, uh, all your assistants to try to schedule a good time for everyone to attend.
All right. Any further discussion and announcements? I, I, uh, I do appreciate, um, all of the discussion that we had this evening. I love the opinion. If everyone thinks alike and we all have the same opinions, we don't need the one person in this room. I think there are seven members who represent seven, uh, uh, districts in, in St. Louis County. And we all have a perspective. Uh, we all need to re, uh, uh, recognize the districts and, and respect the districts that we serve. So, uh, we, we, that's what we hear. We were elected by our own and we should support and protect our own to the extent that we can. So I do appreciate that. Uh, Councilman Fitch?
Uh, Madam Chair, I would also like to thank you for allowing us to have these spirited discussions. As you know, that wasn't always necessarily the case. We were cut off many times. So I really appreciate you allowing us and keeping some good order and, uh, decorum. And so thank you for that. I appreciate that.
You're quite welcome. As long as we're civil, we can handle it. Any further discussions? Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Thank you. You all have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good night.
Bye.